Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the building board meeting. And look for an approval of the agenda.
Oh, for the agenda, second.
With favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. And three, public appearance citizens comments and I did not list on this agenda. Items will not be debated or acted upon this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff if community event is required. Your comments to three minutes. Anyone in the public that would like to speak? Okay. Item four, approval of consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent again, second.
Be all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. And apply new business. Eight, discussion of operator's license. This is what we do every year.
Yeah, we, this should have been on the consent agenda. That was a mistake on our part.
I move to approve the operator license as listed, second. Post. There is. The public hearing and consideration discussion ordinance twenty four dash zero carry annexation. So give you. To go up the public here.
Yep.
Motion open.
Second. Okay, say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is now open. Say what? What is down the annexation?
Exactly.
No, okay, and then motion close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. The item C consideration discussion.
Oh, I move to approve the ordinance twenty four oh six three tone, second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries, sorry about that.
Thanks.
Sorry, Dad. Okay, item C to consideration discussion ordinance twenty four seven to man chapter two forty four. Suri utility section twenty two forty four dash two B C. Under charges of the code of ordinances. Who's gonna speak on that?
I will.
Okay.
Um, so ordinance was approved at the beginning of twenty twenty three to adopt new sewer rates. Uh, and recently staff realized that the addition was incorrect on that ordinance. So this does not change rates at all. This is just updating it to match what we're already charging and make sure that our ordinance, the math is correct. Uh, so, but happy to answer any other questions on that.
We're already getting charges anyway.
Yes.
Motion to pass ordinance twenty four oh seven.
Let me put the discussion. Here you go, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, item D consideration discussion of library project update. Who wants to take that little?
Wow.
Up through your Daniel to speak on it.
Well, first of all, we all know the standards from the town, so. You know, tomorrow we're getting in a closed session, we'll, we'll talk about the price. I'm interested in hearing your guys thoughts on how we can approach that two year.
Um.
Three or two.
Two. Starting on May first.
Yeah.
Jesse.
I, I would say that uh, five hundred seems a little high, but I don't really care. Getting the grant, then um, it's okay. The two years seems a little like if you're gonna try to change something, one year seems sufficient. Cause we're having to pay for it, but if, if they have to have what they have to have to get the building, then so be it. I guess that's.
I would say. Speak for what the deputy brought up at the last meeting. If we're gonna pay rent, we should take it off the selling price.
Or they, what they're getting out of it, they could pay the rent. Themselves.
To be true, to be fair, I would say that they shouldn't get both of those things. Five hundred grand plus two years of an office building is kind of hmm, you know, good for them.
And one year definitely seems sufficient. If the date's not, it's a year and a half from this is deciding, they can still have. For now until.
I just don't wanna crush the thing. Uh, I, I wanna, I wanna get it done. I just. But it's the first where I heard was seven hundred fifty thousand, so five hundred is pretty. Um, but you know, one year would be better than two, zero years would be better than one, so whatever you gotta do.
The original offer I mean was three seventy five, right? Yeah, I was a little blown away by that, but considering the fact that they did say that they were, you know, your, your first original suggestion was in the range, but I think having that pie in the sky grant has given them flexibility to shoot for the moon, so um, and perhaps if the grant doesn't become available when we go back to the drawing board, they'll be more negotiable in our price range, but um, I agree, I, I think that it's really come outside the bounds of what we assumed was going to happen.
And knowing that two local realtors estimated if fair market valued to have a high of four hundred ten and four hundred fifteen of hundred and twenty, I'm sorry. Uh, then say seems extremely high. And I think they're perhaps trying to recap some of their million dollars they paid for the property, which the township people were, some were very upset about.
I would say though also, the fact that they showed up to do the his relationship hasn't been awesome over the last ten or fifteen years or whatever it's been forever.
We're, we're really awful.
Not, they're, right.
Not received.
Not received right now.
How good, how, well, you can't say because you're not, you're going to discuss it tomorrow, but what you said Larry is, uh, you know, isn't uh, is more of a realistic approach, like an offer for what it is. Value that.
I'm sure they expect a counter.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Isn't the main first? Right, tight. Now for you guys, you can make that work, you can make it.
Did the library folks feel a little disappointed when they?
One or the other, but they wanted both. Who certainly impression that.
They feel really put out having to move. Um. Which I got a tiny time, but if they're that put out, they probably should start building their building a long time ago. Having their town hall in our village doesn't make a lot of sense, but there's a lot of ways you can look at it to get pissed off about it. And I feel like it's better to not do that because we just wanna like get through it and like move on to what we're doing. Yeah, yeah.
I think we can overcome it.
Yeah, okay.
Do we, not that this is a big thing, but I'm curious. Do we need to improve the space for them to vote? They should have a contingency.
I'm just gonna say something, yes, it is every municipal clerk's position like job, the state statute that be responsible for running elections in our municipality. The fact that I wonder. When they wrote this contingency, because I would never vote with our board saying like giving the town board the power to tell me where I can run. I mean, that is crazy.
They should already have a plan.
They have a plan. Everybody has, I mean, we talked to them at length. I mean, we talked to deputy clerk who's taking over for John who's retiring as well. She was very comfortable working from home. She was very comfortable running elections out of the new town garage. She was very comfortable having a drop box. I just have a really hard time with the fact that we are, we have no storage here. Offices are full of village storage, but yet we are now going to be tasked with finding them a place for all their stuff. We are election, already have our election, seeing at the seams here at village hall and on top of that, find them a spot to host all their elections, not next year, there shouldn't be any fall, but per how this is written, twenty twenty six as well, um, which seems that staff is really insulted when they put that in there because I would never be comfortable with another board telling me and setting that up for me, I guess.
And we have to, and that'd be, we'd take out a work.
Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of running an election. I think I'm the person that knows the most about it and I don't see how or why we would ever or put ourselves in that position to find that. But I'm more than happy to share notes on the fire department, which is what we told Sarah Beth. She seemed very interested. Super easy to work. Just talk to them yet.
Were you saying that they didn't wanna do that at the first issue?
No, they were, they seemed open to ideas. I mean, they didn't say we are gonna do it, but we talked to Chris Nixon and Sarah Beth after that point meeting. We talked about how she would much rather her home than be in a trailer or a temporary space. Um, and that hosting elections, she saw no issue in posting it. Add which in summer, um. And then the town graduate live next year that will give them a space. Well, um, so I guess I just don't really understand the election thing. It's, it seems like a dangerous idea that I don't think. I'll, because then if for some reason it's wrong at their election, I guess we're also unhooked for that and yeah.
Also, it wasn't the election thing that was the big part of it was the, wasn't it?
Why, the last, the part that I saw.
Then hard part. Can you opt out of that continues? Other possibilities of, is a somewhere written.
Uh, yeah.
Clerk must blah blah blah, and then you could reference that paragraph and say, according to state statute. You had a data and therefore we'd love to accommodate you. However, this would be an illegal act that our, we certainly would not be in. Kind of done.
Yep. Yeah, I think the state statute probably doesn't specifically say that the clerk has to determine a, but it said they have to run the election and part of running the election is determining the spot. I mean, there's a whole bunch of notices that have to be filed if you change, I mean, it's, it's an involved thing, sure. Take over that, you know, uh, but I think that's a great idea and something I just, as the election official for the village, I'm not comfortable with it. We don't have the staff running stuff, another election, we're armed then, um, and sources in terms of that, just like we did. All it took was an email to the fire department. And we went to a meeting and they were working out a deal, so.
I, I can speak to the storage issue, um, yeah, for, for very little money for five hundred dollars, you'd get a job site trailer. You're concerned about a secure storage for their lives.
Right.
In a climate controlled environment.
And you have to have your election machine locked up like in.
In job site trailer for five hundred dollars a month.
Yep.
So I don't think that really is a stumbling block. It's truly not stumbling. You need to put, I'm gonna put one on there, current.
Yeah. Make sure that it was known that there's space here.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The election ones was my biggest concern, just because that seems, and I think that's a great point by him, so. We can reference that statute and I think their clerk would be in agreement.
Wouldn't it be nice if they would ask the old clerk?
That was interesting to see that in there, that's not the conversation we have with their actor.
Cool. Okay. Is there anything else? Just a update? Okay, moving on. Oh, it works insane.
No, no, wait, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just am curious where you guys are at in the process, so is there gonna be anyone to definitely accept their offer or? We, like, is this?
The library board's gonna make a call, right? Thinking last tomorrow night.
Okay. To discuss.
But, but tell me what that means.
They're gonna counter offer on the five hundred thousand.
Counter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, are you telling me they have authority to sign the offer?
Well, about the same as they did before.
The authority rests with us, Roger. Statute says we buy, we.
I know that thought, you don't have to tell me that.
Yeah, I didn't have to tell you about it because you keep bringing it up like they're making the decisions. We're making the decisions. This board is making the decision.
Okay, who, who wrote, who wrote the last offer to the town?
It was, it was the village of Uglarus, but the library board money. So I, joint effort. And I mean, if the village board would like to vote to authorize the library board to submit a counter offer, that could be a bridge here.
Okay.
Or to get the library board to make a decision like this.
Board on submitting a counter offer. You'd like.
Does the library door know what they wanna offer? Could you wanna just say? Okay, you had.
Yeah.
We have an act.
Okay, so what's the best way to solve this right now?
Um, I think you could uh authorize the village administrator to work with the library board to counter offer to the statute.
Okay, and coffee don't should do that?
I don't have a problem with discussion. I think signing the document, but we're gonna, our next meeting is July second, right?
So you're saying somebody that's signing issue instead of the library?
Yeah, yeah, that's what the statute says, okay. We, I build it now and equip it and then library manages.
And I think we'd have to have a special meeting before July. By July, that's a really tight turnaround.
Where, where, where is that application at this point? You, you will start to work on it in a more.
Anything I'm gonna see is tomorrow, I'm saying.
We're going to.
I see a draft tomorrow, yeah. And right along, it's in your Google Doc.
So, and that's just direct to the narrative, plug in the numbers when we know the site because means I have to get the numbers, exactly, so.
So what are the complications?
I haven't seen it either.
Okay.
So I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Shit, they'll need editing, it'll need numbers for the, from the offer.
Yeah, so, in music. And postmark are actually in their positions.
Two P M and it's out of, had to go electronically.
Okay, so, oh, it's twenty first century, that's my, okay, all right, so we, we, if we meet earlier than the second, then we've got eleven plus whatever that earlier is.
Just keep in mind, if you counter offer, there might be more discussion from the town, I mean, just delaying this further is gonna make it even more difficult.
And we don't know how to reply.
Right.
They're not gonna have to.
They have to wait for their. They're probably gonna schedule a special meeting again.
Well, even with.
What are the chances?
If you write the offer and you guys just approve the library spending their own money?
Yeah, right, right. Either way, we have to. Okay, so no matter what, the library board needs to meet tomorrow night, right?
Yeah.
And you have to decide what you wanna do. We sign off on it after the fact, right? So right now we focus on you guys meeting and talking and planning out you wanna spend your money. Once you can they send it off for themselves?
Unless I Lauren was saying the board could give Lauren the power to sign on behalf of the village board. So then there wouldn't be the need for a special meeting if the village board feels comfortable with Lauren doing that.
Okay, well, if it's, if it's, if it's lower than what it is now, we're the same, I'm.
I've heard that Lauren.
And I'm okay with doing.
If, if.
If it's the same or less.
Can you say same or less to me the five hundred? Oh, yes.
Right.
I don't think we're.
Well, then, my point is that we should do this.
Yeah.
So.
What, what value are you missing on the delay?
Dollars.
Four point one million.
Four, four point two five.
If we, or four point two five million, if we delay.
There's a number, there's a number. Every, every six months, it's three percent on your ultimate cost. Your contract for building is going up three percent every six months. That's what most of the big.
This whole thing off is null and void. If they don't get the grant, then we start from scratch. So we're just trying to move this along and I know we have probably have.
How do you know and boy?
Well, if we don't get the money, we don't.
The intent from the, from the town, if it doesn't.
I thought you were making a binding offer on that.
If they get the grant. And that was in their.
And what contingent on the grant? Wow, so you don't really have an offer from them?
Not yet.
Well, if, if the grant were one dollar, would that be different than if it were one million?
Sure.
Yeah.
How, how do you, how do you guys work on that? I mean, there's a pretty big range out there, right?
Well, we've got a couple, I, I think we've got a couple of things that are really backing us into a wall. One, it's time. Uh, two, it's the working with somebody who is, I mean, in all fairness to the town, they are, they were dragging their feet on their own personal, you know, progress and we kind of said, hey, you gotta move this thing along because this is our interest, so I can understand both sides are struggling. Um, in our best interest, I think it would be, I trust Lauren and the library board to make that decision for us. Given the fact that one, it's contingent upon the, and two, both sides know where the rest of it sit because we've been talking about it.
I think your question about the grant and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the grant isn't, it's not like we're only gonna get a hundred dollars, we're gonna get the whole four point two five. Um, the whole project up to four point two five million. Yeah, so it's not a, something in that range.
But what, what is the language in your offer of the justice contingent on the grant and how it's set?
It's right in the offer.
It's actually in their counter offer.
Counter offer, I'm sorry.
Is it?
It was in our original offer as well.
It is in the town offer?
Yes.
And what does it say?
Contingent on the, of the grant. And if the grant isn't awarded, we can go back to the table and revisit in the future.
Right, so, but there's no number in there.
Right, and the basis of the grant is.
No, I, I understand that there's no number. If, if they came to us with one dollar.
They're not, it's either they fund the whole up to four point two five or nothing. They don't.
The dollar.
It says in the, in the grant that they, they don't do partial funding. The deal up to four point two five to pay for the.
That's a pretty interesting thing here. Well, I, my, my whole problem with the grant thing is this is an election year, right? What, what's the date when the grant's finally awarded?
October.
Hmm?
October.
What date?
I think the end of October, I just said, have a meeting, yeah, October one.
Time enough for Tony Evers to drive around the state. Of the awards, right? That's what this is all about. About government putting money on the table.
If they're gonna give us formally, now I don't care.
If you told me that you're, that our purchase of the township properties, does that, does this also include the church property or is that?
There's still contingents on each other.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, they are, but I, I don't recall having seen this language. It says contingent on us getting the grant.
It did.
Can I, can I just?
It says here.
Not this minute.
If the village does not get the grant, the letter of intent is null and void. But the town agrees to with the village regarding the sale of the town hall.
So what we don't have is an actual offer to purchase. We've got a letter of intent to enter into an agreement.
Right, which is all we needed for the, which is what is discussed at the joint.
Yeah, you're just satisfying grant terms rather than legal terms.
Right.
One thing that is, as an observer, that I think is good is this pressure also on the township to get top out. So I mean, they have some impetus to move along with this too, because if they don't, if you guys don't get the grant and then they're back to a, a range of, you know, three hundred thousand, they've lost a lot of money too. So I think you guys are doing a really good job and I like this idea of proving the library board to write something and work with your administrator so that we have another meeting.
Yeah.
So there's no reason to log this down with a lot of what ifs with people that haven't done their homework.
Is that actually?
Does that need to be a motion?
Yeah, yeah, motion to get more.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we give our administrator permission to work with the library board on moving this process along.
And writing an offer.
Not, not an offer, a letter of intent, two different things.
Okay.
Letter of.
Yeah.
That is actually true.
I second.
Okay, okay. Um, can I put out one more thing just for you all to think about?
Okay.
Um, we've been doing this for years and I've been, I don't know how many meetings where this board would say to the library board, well, it's your money. And then cut them loose and they were doing it. And I think this business of um who's, who's making, it's by the statute is something we should pay attention to, and let me give you a reason why. Um. I, I think when it comes, when it comes time to actually buy any property, it ought to be our money that's out there, not theirs. And the reason I'm concerned about that is any new building that they go into, that's got additional costs, insurance, mowing and all that kind of stuff. Is it thirty five thousand issue you've been thinking about? Okay, so are we gonna, are we planning on giving the library thirty five thousand doll, more dollars in our next budget? Do this, and I think the answer probably is, because it comes out of our side over here, you know, at the township, of, of the village. So I'd like to see the uh, you, you consider whether this pot, so to speak, this, are you familiar in the quarter? A million dollars in a condom pays forty thousand a year. That covers that thirty five, that, that means maybe isn't in the business.
Right.
Okay, and I just, I just called up, we, way back when in ninety six or something, we put fifty thousand into the community foundations for the village of Uglarus. Now six hundred and eighty thousand. And it's paying out twenty five thousand a year. And you can go through and follow this business of endowing things. We're talking about the same concept we might be using when it comes to the cemetery, of trying to figure out how to set up an endowment. And so it keeps it away from our operating stuff here. In the worst way, I'd like to see this library project be successful. And that we are doing our best to make sure that they can succeed. And with the framework of where the financing is going now, I don't worry about that. So let's put that in their hat as to whether we ought to drop under the statute, put our money out, buy the property, they keep theirs, they don't have to set it up, you know, you, the next day by any means, but somewhere before completion, they start making these transfers, leave themselves in a push, and so the unknown was gonna be an unknown in construction. So that's kind of my framework here is the more money, the better. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Here is. Okay, public work, there's nothing from. The righties here. No, okay. Uh, public works publicly say we have a consideration discussion. Really great case application.
I guess students to chat about.
You can hear the zoom in.
You can, either one, whatever you're comfortable with.
I'll just sit here and uh, all right, so I'm out of W D I. And uh, we can all straight application for. Um, this is a certain set. So right now, we're just working through the step rate application process and the first part is to file the rate application. We are putting it. Hold this man. Johnson, then they will work through all their internal processes. I just have to know about the customers of increases and then the public hearing. Implementation table will be set for the rates and then the rates will go to. There's several parts to electric rate application, the revenue requirement, which is how much money does utility need to continue to operate? Customers. That's the rate, that's how we call it. The next year, the second has a comp statement from the New Glarus electric utility. This shows that this year's twenty twenty four nuclear is earning a one point six six percent return. Um, so the utilities requesting the increase point eight six percent for three hundred. This is about the twenty year municipal bond index S and P. Just standing before us. Anyways, some other recent rate cases that have gone through the P S six process have gotten a rate of return up between four point nine and six point nine percent. So the overall increase will very likely be less than eleven point eight six percent. And the rate study that got.
Where, where does that, where does that come from? That, that seven percent number gets monitored.
That's from the twenty year minutes. That's from the twenty year municipal bond index from standard.
Yeah, but then you said the, the likelihood of us getting eleven point eight six percent is.
Probably, it's probably gonna be lower than that because some arbitrary decision with the power of service commission, just with our regulations.
So what, so you, you do this all day long. What, what, what are other people getting?
Between four point nine and six point nine for the rate.
In other words, the seven is between. Right?
Yeah.
That, that's, that's where that give is.
Yes.
Okay, okay. The difference between five and seven, are we, is it because we're?
Um, the utility that got four point nine percent didn't have any debt.
Didn't have any debt? Oh, okay.
Uh, so if you have some debt, you know, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Your ability which you do with this consultation, you're more than likely to get, you know, a higher.
Like how did we get that? Right? That's the whole point of this, our debt numbers. Okay, thank you.
Before the new substation project. New Glarus had very little capital to the public utility and then add more than that. The operating capital, totally found about two point eight billion to six point two million. So that's why such a.
Because we did.
Yes.
Our substation, right? I mean, this is all about the substation.
Yes, without substation, the increase is point two. Substation, but that's you continue the liability thing, so. And then the factors we consider rate design, like the cost of service, so it's. Recovering fixed costs and fixed charges, also comparing to other utilities that. Bro, it's like a lot of energy to make sure how to impact our customer bills and price incentives to kind of nudge. Customers towards using less energy or using it in a way that will reduce everybody's. Some of the. Or visible changes to the rates that we are proposing are increasing the service charge from eleven dollars thirteen fifty a month. The general service, which is like. And C B two, which is large power from a hundred to two hundred. There's slight decrease to the commitment to community program writer for residential customers. Next page. The class. Public Service Commission wants to submit this to them as a. I wouldn't expect them to be before the year.
Okay.
These are all percents. The dollar stuff out here, eleven from. The average customer, so that's what we're on.
Yeah, so. It's not a reason why we're, that's just what. Should be if we want to face purely a cost to serve that. So we did. Kind of show what influenced how we. About the new grades. So page eight shows the proposed overall dollar amount changes for these rate classes. The residential customers will see on average about a twelve point seven percent increase.
They never think about it that way.
So that will be about ten dollars a month for the average residential customer in New Glarus. And for the average commercial customer, that would be twenty seven dollars a month.
Okay, so you're saying that the average customer in the boroughs of six twelve is now paying how much? Ninety something? And it's gonna go to a hundred. This, we're, we're timing for next quarter, right? That's the worry. Yeah, yeah.
Then we move on to the last page. This compares what our old rates would show compared to. So the average residential customer, even after this increase, will still be thirteen percent below a favorite pay. And a lot of energy is likely to increase the rates by four point five percent for next year, so that number's only. Ten's pulling out, what overall bill would be?
Does anybody here have a lot of goats a hundred dollars a month?
Well, that's the R and G.
Yeah, it's any charges from the village, like water, sewer. Wait, uh, wait, water.
Some of our larger flat, we totally consider it solar. You know, we pay eleven and get paid a lot of. Over the line going that way. We pay eleven or twelve, maybe something like that. I would only get half of that back. For obvious reasons, this is not sustainable. What's your time schedule and how do we exercise our opinions about that?
Well, we have, uh. We have fifty one members, you know, for all Wisconsin. They have one member right now, Surgeon Bay to kind of. Power through new portfolio. So what we're proposing for Surgeon Bay is very similar to what the investor on utilities are doing right now. Um, instead of getting the full retail rate for surplus energy. Um, where our proposal is to provide the avoided cost.
Okay, but, but it's, it, it just because they wanna do this, it's not, doesn't apply to all your fifty one members at the same time.
Once, once we get through the commission, this first time, we'll be filing it for. The, uh, other fifty one, forty one members in Wisconsin, um, to have the same type of material.
So we don't have any say in what that number is? I mean, what if we thought seventy percent was better than fifty percent?
Well, we're, we're basing our, our, what we're going to pay. Um, for excess energy from solar based on W P P I's avoided costs. W P P I's avoided costs is the same for any month, um, because all members pay the same, same rate. And our avoided costs are the same, whether it's, whether we get a kilowatt hour, um, New Glarus, or whether we get.
But the solar generates revenue. The solar reduces individual costs, right?
It, it, it does.
That, so that, you don't have anything to do with that, right? And I understand, it's finance, right? If we, if everybody did this, then there's no money. Right, I understand that fixed cost issues.
Yeah.
This is the one, somebody's cost issue with Surgeon Bay might be held, there's an hour fixed cost, for example, and yet we're being in the same group. Uh, you can tell I'm leaning in here, so you don't have to answer this. You, you can say, uh, later. But that concerns me is that we get stuck with somebody else's overhead.
And, and that's, you know, that's what we're trying to avoid by just limiting. What we pay for excess solar to just our avoided costs. Um, then we're not causing any. Subsidy from member to member. Um, you know, we're just, you know, we're just cleaning what. What we would pay if we had it to the market and buy a kilowatt.
Let me do, let me do this. Asking these questions, so I'll call you up.
Okay.
Okay, it's the, um. Discussion from the board. Um, you can motion to.
Uh, I make a motion to. Ask the patient. Approve the application?
Yep.
Second, okay. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, most charities. It'll be consideration special utility rate case application.
Alright, I will do this one. I'll do my best. Um, so W P P I prepared the electric utility and elders. Uh, prepared the water utility rate case application. Um, elders was not able to be here tonight. They were at the public works committee meeting and gave a, a presentation on that. Um, so. They submitted some information at the get about their application for our water utility. Um, but the. Biggest gist I would highlight is the average residential. Be an eleven dollars and twenty seven cent increase to their monthly bill or twenty six point three eight. Um, this is a number that you all saw, well, those who were bored back when we did the, uh, utility cash flow analysis, that was. Around that number that they projected that we would. On a reservoir project that we're gonna be completing.
Does these both come online at the same time?
Around the same time, yes. Uh, you know, there's separate applications. I don't know exactly how the P S D works on that. Maybe you guys know, but I imagine they'll probably take a similar timeline.
I, I think, I think the P S D runs through their water applications quicker than they do.
Oh, okay.
Applications, so, um, my best guess would be the water application will come online first. Um, and the electric adjustments will come online February somewhere in there.
So do you want a motion?
Well, say aye. And gentlemen.
Yes, thank you.
Bar is up at the corner.
Item C. Uh, consideration special operators licensing I L C U, Amanda Parsons. Fifty seven in your packet, uh, one, really helps me here.
Yeah, uh, Jeff is getting married this week, so he is not here. Um, but I do have notes on her. But the public works committee reviewed this and recommended denial. I'm happy to. Um, I guess I'll mention that this person is on probation and I believe there's restrictions on her. Related to handling alcohol, so.
I looked her up on Facebook.
Imagine that.
So we can just let this go and.
We need to make a motion or deny.
Motion, uh, I, I make a motion to deny, uh, Amanda Parsons an operator license.
You know, favors.
Aye.
There is. Do this as a group?
Yes.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. And we, consideration special miscellaneous license.
Make a motion.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Financial finance consideration, that's a resolution by fourteen for wage increase for wastewater treatment plays operator. Lauren, I'll let you highlight this.
Alright, um, so when Aaron was high, uh, back in September twenty twenty two. Um, we said that we would increase his compensation by two dollars an hour if he completed his advanced operator and training license. Um, he has completed three out of the five certifications, um, and as. Get into this with the next one, but as an effort to, um, retain Aaron and also kind of reward his progress towards licensure. Um, we're recommending to prorate that increase. Uh, we've already budgeted the full amount because we, uh, in anticipation that he would get the full licensure this year. So we already have money in the budget to pay the prorated amount. Uh, I wanna correct the resolution. I had incorrect numbers here. It will be increasing from twenty nine twenty seven to thirty forty seven. So he would be paid thirty forty seven.
The budget. Yeah, uh. Does his, uh, responsibilities change? Does he have more responsibilities?
No. Uh, somebody has to have a C D L, right? Somebody has to have this certification and that's actually how we.
So in a sense, he took on the responsibility.
Yeah, no, I think he's probably worth it. And I think everybody's gonna be running the elbows. Let me tell him that we'd like him to increase his responsibilities with this race.
Well, he. If he is stood on there, he, on the streets with Joe.
All I want you to do is say, we hope with this.
So why, I don't know.
I don't know why I have to do this.
I don't know if he can, or. He knows his responsibilities. There's not much.
And Joe and I did have a conversation with him last week, um, and he expressed concern about the fact that he. Feels somewhat spread thin, um, at the wastewater treatment plant, so I.
Hearing this?
Yeah.
He's himself plus two and he's down one.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Okay.
You had the same conversation with the police.
So we need a, well, I'm, I'm also kind of inserting where we're saying to complete all the advanced. Three, five advanced classes. There's two more advanced to be completed. Full amount without.
We pro-rated it. And we had an extensive conversation with him, with him about the fact that proration does not mean that he's. He didn't seem to think any differently, so he thought that was a for sure thing anyway, so.
Okay.
Which is why we left that, this resolution. This is all kind of stemming from a situation. We lost the public works labor last week, Ken Wolf. Um, it was an unexpected loss, um, and we did, we got no notice from him, um, so.
Are you on the next? You're on the next one?
No, I'm giving, I'm giving background on why these are both coming tonight. We got an immediate resignation from Ken Wolf. He was done the same day he resigned. Um, and we also were told from Velvel's, um, administrator that another one of our. Um, employees was also looking into moving to Velvel. Um, we narrowed it down to, because of so many public works, so we knew it wasn't Joe. Um, so it's Aaron or Matthew and, um, Lauren was out sick last week, so I just stepped in for her. But the conversations were really between Joe and Aaron and Joe and Matthew separately. Um, just to make sure, you know, what they were thinking, see if we can figure out who was the one that was thinking of leaving, you know. Understanding the situation better, what we can do better. And we discovered it was Matthew that was actually, um, has looked into Velva and is still considering it. Which is why we'll get to the next resolution. Um, but then talk to Aaron, he was not considering Velva. Um, but this proration thing actually oddly enough was brought up by Aaron to us before Henry. And it just, it's two days before, so it all kind of just happened together. So that's the background. Nope, that's been.
Okay, so we need a motion.
Proved, ended resolution.
When, when he completes four and five, then he'll get the, the other eighty cents.
Correct.
To get it to the two dollars that we, so he get, he completed them all.
Go, you want a motion?
So move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All favors say aye. Item B, consideration discussion. Thirteen, please, we're probably fourth first labor.
So, so this increases significantly higher. And it is competitive with other.
Yes, so we know that this particular. On table with Velvel for twenty five dollars an hour, and so we're matching that offer to keep him here.
You, you nailed the problem. You don't know what's competitive until the guy comes and says, I'm bringing my, my, uh, right. Compass plan, I'm out of here.
Is it relatively hard to rehire this position, I'm guessing?
Yeah, I mean.
And then we're down one. Successful over the years, but.
When we hired.
We don't know now.
When we hired Matthew, he was the only good candidate. The thing that hinders us is we often have a C D L. And C D Ls used to be a lot easier to obtain until recent legislation passed, I believe, last year, and now it's very expensive, um, and. And C D Ls used to be a lot easier to obtain until recent legislation passed, I believe, last year, and now it's very expensive, um, and. C D L drivers make a lot of money.
Well, we also wanted to pay people at work and, you know, living.
I mean, I will say a five dollar increase is not something that we particularly like look to do because we have eighteen other employees that are like.
I guess that's my question is, does the situation hinder someone else from saying, hey, I'm gonna go to Montreuil, I'm gonna get, you know, thirty thousand dollars.
We have the money in this budget, you and I. And where this is a unique situation, I mean. We don't have another department at the moment that is hemorrhaging employees.
If Matthew leaves, then there's still all alone with three L T Es.
And then Joel will be in here on happy, so I get it for sure, and if you guys. I am too, I just wanna great play.
It's not ideal, but we want to keep Matthew and. At least have one public worker. Um, and he hasn't said that he's yeah, he can take this, he told us, he didn't, when we told him about twenty five, he didn't say he's gonna stay. So it's just our effort to keep him.
Yeah, okay.
And I did saw it with Lauren, I really wondered if you would sit down and really describe to him what his duties are gonna be. When he's next done.
Cause that's what this would also mean, so it's not. This would also mean he's stepping into the number one public works laborer role where Ken was, um, and Ken stepped into that last year when Chuck retired. And he had an increase for that too, and it's, it's, you're running public works with those here. Which isn't often, but it happens.
Is it fair to assume that Belleville is our major competition because?
For public works right now, just because they don't have anybody.
They've got an expanding. Uh, number of homes, I mean, their their building rate is way higher than us, right?
Yeah, they have more. I would say the reason that Velveld's our main competitor with this right now is because Velveld does not have public works employee, I mean, they. They are desperate for public, they have, I don't, I think, I'm pretty sure their last public works employee was resigning. Is what I heard, so I think they're in a desperate situation to. Build that back up.
And resigning because. Don't know.
I don't know that, I don't. Know that it was a money thing.
The finer the noise you get, the more expensive it is.
I don't, I don't know that it was a money thing, I don't know if it's a culture thing, I. It's not here, so.
Would it help if we started loans?
I was curious, because I'm kind of. And we'll quit in state media, really, do we know? Do we know why these are going on holy works, I mean, if if this guy was interested in leaving and he left, is there a bigger conversation that needs to happen?
And yeah, that happened, I didn't, I did an interview with Ken. And Kelsey and Joe last week met with Matthew, they both expressed, you know, concerns and, um, were addressing that with Joe's man. They weren't clicking necessarily, and so we're working through that. Um, and hopefully we can make improvements there.
How long had Ken worked here before he did that?
Year. No, not even.
That makes a lot more sense.
I heard that Belleville. Has continued to pause position.
Hire more people.
Oh, how interesting is that? That's, that's what I heard. So you heard that?
I am, um, actually, I don't read directly from Belleville, so. This is in a fluid situation.
This is what calls other than tight labor market.
Yeah.
Well, it's not every day, right? But right now, the shoe's on the other foot.
Okay.
Don't need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the wage increase for the public works laborer, resolution twenty four fourteen.
To twenty five, right?
Yeah.
Second, yeah, oh.
Go ahead. We have a motion in second, okay. The president's report, report of consideration. Was it just for?
Yeah, just for zoning Board of Appeals, which I let Jesse know that technically we're supposed to have five citizen members on C D A. So I, I swapped out Jesse and Chuck will be the chair now.
Chuck Wilson?
Yeah. And then just to approve committee appointments is fine.
I move to the committee point.
Second.
Hey, also say hi.
Hi.
Here is, that would be to this discussion, building expectations. Lawrence is gonna speak on this.
Um. So. There's been some discussion that I've heard from several board members with concerns about what transpired regarding the. Purchase of library property in this wing link. This discussion, um, so I wanted to review what a walking forum is. So I have this handy dandy key sheet here that the Wisconsin. Department of Health Services put out.
Oh, sorry, that's you.
Thanks. I would appreciate.
Oh, thanks.
Um, I I recommend reading through this, I think it's a good, um, you know.
Can you start with the background? Why choose this? Well, the attorney general's.
I thought it was a good overview of.
Okay.
Open meeting. Yeah.
The correct case, that's it.
Yep, so on the back page, it talks about walking forums. Um. And I think it's important to highlight this because I know you all talk to each other. Stuff of the village board will come up in conversation, and so I want you to be aware of what. The open meetings log defines as a walking forum, you'll see that on the second paragraph. A walking forum is a meeting resulting from a series of gatherings among body members. A walking forum consists of the following elements. A series of gatherings among body members that are each smaller in size than a forum. Where an agreement to act uniformly is implied or expressly reached. And in insufficient number of to control the body, that is an awkward sentence. Um, so. So I, I wanted to highlight this because I know there was discussions among board members specifically, um, in preparation for. Um, the joint library meeting that we had, um, that last week already, um. And. It sounds like that could have been a walking forum violation, and so I just wanted to bring this to your attention and also just kind of. Provide a space where if you all would like to discuss. This and kind of your expectations of yourselves. Oftentimes elected boards kind of police themselves and how they want each other to act and operate with each other, and so if you would like to have that discussion. I will. Open it up for you.
What is the, so if there's a walking form violation? What happens? What would be provided for that?
Somebody would, like, say you and I were outside talking. And a citizen walked by and they picked up on our conversation, they could. By the complaint.
Yeah, it could end in a lawsuit, I mean, there, there have been lawsuits brought before. Yeah.
Cause of action, and there's a thing.
Yeah.
Fine.
Right.
That's, that's the enforcement side. So. One thing I do when I have these questions, I call them up. Call up the district attorney and say, this is where we are, what are we doing, how do you feel about this? Cause the one thing that shows that doesn't show here, but shows in the A G's report, is that this whole business about. Email has never been litigated. So they're all, you know, I I'm not saying it's not the same, I mean, it's the twenty first century, right? It's just a different way of doing it, but they're pretty conscious of some of this stuff. Is vague at this point. And most of the cases like showers, and look at the date on showers, nineteen eighty seven. Most of us live alive then.
I was eight.
I was seven.
Okay, I guess to rephrase my question, what is the consequence? For the other board level? So. I start, you know, I have a walking forum violation, what happens? Do I get talked to? Do I get, I mean, do we have a court of conduct? What does that look like?
A good question, we do not currently have a court of conduct. There really, really is no consequence other than threat of litigation at this time, the board could.
Against the board as a whole or against me?
Against the board, there's a community that has. Patient not because of walking.
I think it probably questions whether or not you made a decision, right?
Well, if you had a walking or decision, the decision.
The walking forms, like if you told. This thing and then told Michael, and then you all did it, and then there was somebody in the public that knew that you guys were doing this, that would open up. I also think it's just important. Hey, as a village board member, remember what. And you are. Your. Respectful to the law of the land, and also respectful to each other. Um, and making sure that we're having those conversations that the public deserves to hear in open meetings. I think that's really important. Sometimes.
To go home?
Anything else on your? Bar is helping the bar.
That's not a walking forum. Who's, who's the DA that you're calling? What's the name of the DA that you call? Yeah.
Craig Golden.
What was it?
He's up for reelection right now, so he'll probably take the phone.
If there's nothing. I was surprised, he picked up the phone.
We are hurt, all right.